Council meeting for October 19th, 2020. Almost forgot the date there. Your treasurer, Ms. Can you please call the roll?
Counselor Schoen.
Present.
Counselor Gardner.
Present.
Counselor Tulwichkey.
Present.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Present.
Counselor President Mellon.
This time I'd ask everyone to please rise and join us in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. This is Lee Randall with the OZ. Can you hear me? Not real well. Let's see.
Try again, Lee.
Can you hear me now? Testing, testing. Any better?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so 45th Street between Calumet and Southwood Drive. Last week, CN moved the train traffic from the shoe fly to the mainline tracks. This week, they continue to work on those mainline tracks. They are removing mechanical joints and welding new joints and doing distressing on that. That's expected to be completed this week. Shoe fly excavation began today, and that's expected to continue for another week. Architectural surface treatment or staining of the walls one and two are now complete, and anti-graffiti coating is expected perhaps this week, weather permitting. Bike path and lift station construction is ongoing. We have crews on site beginning work there at that lift station to install the electrical conduits and hopefully the lift station itself by the first week of November. Underground storm sewer installation continues there along 45th east of Calumet up to the underpass, and curb installation is expected there between Centennial Drive and the underpass in the coming weeks. As far as Calumet Avenue, construction of the center curb is complete. We have still one lane each direction on Calumet, and the outside lanes, including a right turn lane for southbound and a left turn lane for northbound. Eastbound has one through lane for the right turn as well as a left turn at Calumet. Sod that was placed the end of September and a little bit just last week, watering continues there. Asphalt surface on Calumet is expected later this week, as well as some profile and transitional milling tomorrow. Permanent pavement markings will then follow probably early next week. So then at that point, we'd be able to pass the baton for resurfacing there further to the north, and then resurfacing for that temporary walk and bike path are also expected later this week. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time. Counselors, do you have any questions?
Lee, this is Steve.
Yes.
My question is just an update on acceleration. How are we doing currently? Available funds?
Yes, we certainly continue to accelerate. At this point, we're about 30 weeks in. I have estimated we are at about 200,000 out of the 275.
And you feel that we have sufficient funds to get to substantial completion this year?
Not entirely sure. There's a good chance that there may be some more funds necessary. To what extent? Not entirely sure. But more than likely, there will be probably some type of small addition or addendum necessary.
Okay. Just thinking about the run rate so far, it seems like we're tracking about at the right number. So thank you for the update.
Yes, we seem to be moving forward, but yeah, with a big push here at the end, there's a pretty good chance that we may overrun that amount. But you know, again, I don't think it's going to necessarily be substantial.
Do you actually project and have this project completed by the end of this year?
We're hoping weather depending with our current schedule to have most everything completed by the first or second week of December. Of course, that's weather permitting. One of the last things that we're going to need to do is place asphalt.
That's for both 45th Street and Calumet Avenue. So we'll have both?
Well, Calumet will be done by Halloween. So Calumet Avenue will be completely done next week. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Lee. Appreciate that. Thank you. Certainly. My pleasure. Take care. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. The public comment portion of the meeting. We'll first do the in-person comments. If you'd like to ask the council at this time, limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes for a group spokesperson, reflective and maybe public policy issues, and the chair at its sole discretion may recognize individuals wishing to speak on different topics at any time and may end the open to the public session. If you would like to speak, if you please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Yeah, pardon.
No.
Victor Movic, 1833 Tulip Lane. Question I have is, last week, read an article in The Times. Hammond's talking about raising their water rates, and reading the article, we buy water from Hammond. They're talking about $1.90 per thousand gallons. How much do we pay over what they charge their people? And what can we expect when this rate, if this rate goes through?
I don't have that information off the top of my head. I would be happy to make a report to council at the next council meeting, and it could be included, just a brief one-page memo with a table with current rates and then expected rates.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here?
Hi. My name is Srikanth Karla. I'm a director of Monstor in Westlake. Anil?
Yeah, this is Anil. I live in Westlake, Monstor.
Can I, just for the record, please, can I give your names again and your addresses?
All right. This is Anil. Again, I have a presentation. I can give my address.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And then I live in Westlake, 24, on South Indiana, 463.
Thank you.
And I'm Sri, S-R-I. Last name is Kan Karla, K-A-N-K-A-R-L-A, 341 Norwich Court, Monstor. So we are here actually on behalf of a group of friends here, and we wanted to put together a sporting proposal for the council, and it's related to the, it's actually relevant for more for the park and recreation, but we wanted to make sure we get in the agenda and make sure we are in the list of consideration. Okay? So we'll be sharing a presentation, and we have a good video also, you know, exactly of what the proposal consists of. And this is for a cricket ground. So we are looking at putting together, you know, a small space in the Westlake Park. It's between the playground for the kids and the soccer field, between that. And all we need is a very small strip of concrete pitch, which is where bowling and batting, you know, that's the, that's the game. And we are looking at somewhere around, you know, and that area is, and I was trying to make a second. It is about, you know, that area, based on Google measurement, it's about 210 square feet of that area, and all we need is about one-fourth of that space. That's a playing area, but the strip where we put the bowling and the batting, it's only about, what, about 900?
Yeah, it's a thousand square foot, because it's typically the pitch where we wanted to have some kind of a concrete pitch where we bowler and batsmen, I think it's in the , based on terminology, it's a pitcher and the batter where we play in between. So that's the kind of a pitch we are looking, but the radius is almost one-tenth of what our existing park and recreation at the Westlake's community. We have started this playing together almost four years since 2015 with a group of people, people in the Westlake community. Over the years, it's becoming a bigger congregation. It's like a lot of people from cricketing, cricket-playing nation, they congregated more, and now it's a kind of a, it's becoming a more process. Every summer, we played almost 20, 25 people at least twice a week, so we can congregate there, and we assemble there, then play cricket for a couple of hours and then go home. So that's kind of a process we have been doing for past four years. We wanted to have a kind of a permanent plate, because we are finding difficulty in playing on grass and playing on road. It's kind of a challenging, but if we have the city could provide some kind of a permanent pitch, that would precipitate us to have a permanent ground and more basic public community.
So, and I know that the, if we can, are we allowed more time? Or if there are any other questions, you know, please, you know, if you're running out to 20 minutes, you know, limit on that?
I guess at this time, I thank you for your proposal. In fact, I saw somebody walking on my street the other day with a cricket paddle, and I asked him, I said, "What's going on with the cricket paddle?" But you're gonna, I heard you before the meeting, you're gonna present the information to our town manager and also discuss this with the Parks and Recreation Department? Because I think as much as it's an interesting proposal, I think it really should be directed towards the Parks and Recreation Department, and they have the public spaces in town here that they can review and talk a little bit more about your requirements and what the restrictions and all the details.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Because we have all the, you just saw somebody.
Will somebody be at tomorrow's park board meeting?
Yeah, we could have them, yeah.
Absolutely. And, you know, I mean, is that information publicly available on the website or?
What time is the meeting?
For the meeting?
The meeting time at all?
And how to get in that agenda, because, you know, we were.
There's a time at the park board meeting, same as here, where any member of the public can speak. Okay.
The meeting is tomorrow at 5:00 here at Monstor Town Hall.
Oh, okay. That's great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anil, thank you for coming and making the pitch for the.
For the cricket pitch. Pitch for the pitch.
We do get calls for people asking where are you meeting? So something definitely worth pursuing.
I would also say that if you'd like, I definitely should go to the park board, because they do have a separate board and present to them, but if you would like to share your presentation and you want to email it to the town manager, and then he can port it on to us, just so we can have it, we'd be more than happy to review it.
I hope there is no limit on the, you know, email side, because there's a video and better than.
No, no.
All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for coming.
Great idea.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Seeing none in our audience, Mr. Anderson, do we have anybody on from our emails that have been submitted?
I received three emails, all in favor, encouraging the town policymakers to consider the resolution that you'll see later this evening.
Get the microphone closer to.
All encouraging the policymakers in town to consider positively the resolution regarding the IU resilience cohort.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That was it.
All right. At this time, I will close the public comment portion of our meeting, and that moves us to the consent agenda.
I will be accepting consent agenda given. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions, discussion? But treasurer, Ms. Can you please call the roll?
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulwichkey.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
President Mellon.
Yes.
Five-zero approval.
Thank you. Moving to old business, I'm gonna try something this evening, instead of asking everyone who has submitted the memo regarding the topic. If we could, I assume everybody has read their packets and reviewed, so if we want to, if the council chooses to make a motion, then we can take our discussion and our questions at that time, just maybe to eliminate some redundancy, but that in no way means that there won't be full discussion and chance for questions for everyone. So that we give that a try tonight. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. So again, we're at ordinance 1807. It's the second reading.
I will be at outdoor man's 1807 on second reading. Second then?
We have a motion and a second. Sir, any discussion, questions?
I have, I just wanted to make sure, Counselor Gardner, was the clarification sufficient to you that you requested last time?
Yes, I do have a couple additional questions. With regards to the difference between staff time between a commercial and residential preliminary plat, the difference in the fees that we're charging prior were the same. The upcoming ones, the commercial subdivision preliminary plat is quite a bit more than, you know, again, both of it raised, but a little bit more than the commercial versus residential. So I just want to ask Tom that question, what the difference was there, and I have a couple other ones after that.
Have you respond, have you respond to that question? In, under our current fee structure, there is no distinction between a commercial plat and a residential plat. That's why the price is shown, or the fee is shown as the same. So what we're doing in this proposed revision is we're separating those two, because typically a commercial plat has a different set of reviews, things that need to be addressed and reviewed, and so consequently, the time that it takes is different.
Is it staff time or is it sub consultant time?
So in almost, in all of these instances, the fee itself is based on the consultant fees that we expend for the reviews. So each fee is, the base fee is those consultant fees times, and then we added a multiplier, 15% to account for staff time.
The engineering inspection fees, doesn't look like any other town charges those fees. And those look like they're new fees that we're instituting at this time. Are those also because of the consultant that we're?
Yeah, what those are, are fees, those are essentially fees for things that we've already been doing, and we've been paying SEH to do. We just never recouped those costs in any way. Those are typically, those are essentially the activities that take place in, when there's a site work permit that's pulled. So there are, you know, what's called erosion and sediment controls inspection. So that's, there are certain matters that need to be taken on a construction site to ensure that erosion and sediment controls are in place. Those are things like soap fences, you know, baskets in sewer grates and things like that. So those are inspections that are happening, but we're not.
But those are fees, those are fees above and beyond the development plan review fees that we're automatically charging.
That's correct. So the development plan fees are essentially review fees. Those are, those are, that's when a plan is submitted, it's reviewed, and so that's that activity that's being charged for. The engineering inspection fees are not, are sort of different set of activities, and those are inspections of a site. So those are an engineer going out and actually inspecting the work that's being done on site.
Okay.
Do you have further questions? I'm not trying to rush you. I just, I don't want to move on to somebody else here.
No, I guess the other question is residential final plat. That was a fee that we did not charge in the past that we're charging now. What's the purpose behind that one?
The time that, so at the time that we do charge that fee, it's just a subdivision fee. So we charge that subdivision fee twice. When somebody applies for a preliminary plat, they get charged the $350 fee. When they apply for their final plat approval, or what's also called a secondary plat, they get charged that fee again. So those are two separate actions by the planning commission. Again, what we're doing with this proposed revision is we're separating out those two activities, because there's a different level of review that's involved. A preliminary plat review is much more involved. That's when we have our engineer doing engineering plans. We are looking at everything for zoning. When we do a final plat, we're essentially just verifying that, one, the document that is that final plat is the same as the preliminary plat that was submitted. So we're making sure everything is exactly the way it was when it was approved for preliminary plat, but we're also doing all the work of verifying all those things, those milestones that need to be hit for a project to receive preliminary final plat approval have been completed. So is there a bond posted for a maintenance bond? Is there infrastructure that hasn't been completed, or we need a completion bond? Are there, there's all sorts of, those types of things that need to be reviewed and documented and verified. And once we do that, then we.
But those are our staff review, those, that's why it's only a nominal $700 fee.
Yeah, so the 700 in that instance is primarily for legal.
And my last question at this time would be, the development standard variance, the use variance, the conditional use permit, that fee that's being proposed, that is mainly our staff time with those, or is that?
It's primarily, actually, that's primarily a legal fee. That's the cause that it, of essentially having legal counsel review staff reports, review applications, attend the meetings, and provide legal counsel to the board of zoning affairs.
I guess I'm done at this time.
You have questions? Counselor Gardner? It's hard for me to tell.
It's hard to.
Yeah, my question was, well, first of all, I do like that we're taking a look at these fees. I think, as you mentioned last time, it's been a long time. We don't even know when they were set, and the comparison against our neighboring communities and others shows that they were pretty out of date. So I think that shows responsible fiscal stewardship, and I think it also brings a level of professionalism, continued increase in professionalism to our building department. So I'm appreciative of the effort. And my question at the end, what Counselor Gardner was just talking about, the 805, for the, these are the ones that are primarily for residents, in my understanding of it. I'm just curious what the 805 was based on and how that compares to the cost of an average improvement that a resident makes. Thinking is, I don't, if the permit costs like a significant percent of what people are doing, there may be a disincentive to, or an incentive to step around the permit. So I was wondering if you.
That's a good, I mean, that's a, that's a good question. You know, it would depend, for developmental standards variance, it could be a simple, you know, very inexpensive project, like a fence being placed somewhere where a fence would not be normally permitted, which is really not an expensive project, but it could be as, you know, as expensive as a garage being constructed while they're normally permitted, or a cultural outline, or they have a garage space that would not be permitted under ordinance. So it really runs the whole kind of gamut of costs. Yeah, I would say that typically, a resident would be applying for a developmental standards variance, not so much a use variance or a conditional use permit.
And the legal fees for that review is the same across all of those, more or less?
Yeah, it's essentially, like I said, each one of these variances, each one of these BZA, Board of Zoning, Fields of Actions, requires two meetings, a preliminary hearing and a public hearing. So there's two meetings that we have an attorney present for, and there's, they also require public notice. So we also have our attorney reviewing to ensure that public notice requirements are met, and all decisions by Board of Zoning appeals have to be accompanied by written files of fact, which are drafted by our attorney. So that comprises the bulk of the cost of those petitions.
Okay. And those are unit activities, doesn't really matter so much on the value of the activity, if I understand you.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification. I just asked, maybe we keep an eye on the, on the changes, or the developmental standard variance? If we look at it and it starts to be a significant part of the project cost, we might want to revisit that one later. Thank you.
Counselor Stine, do you have any questions?
I didn't see it in your, what's the effective date?
You know, I don't know if it's, I would imagine it would be effective upon people of the ordinance, but.
In, on point three in ordinance 1807, this ordinance, it proposes that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect after passage and publication in accordance with the law.
Gotcha. My only comment would be, the residential, the use variance, that is the one that causes me a little pause, because that is the one residential, that's, we get, would you say the volume that we get, it's usually residents are probably getting?
$300?
Well, it was 300, and now we're proposing 805, and just compared to, to our region neighbors, it's, it's significantly higher. Like if I'm thinking about a project that's, you know, lower, do you have some?
You're.
Am I not looking at, like, is something?
You're really.
I have fog in my glasses. I mean, I'm doing my best.
Did I get it?
Yes.
You're really talking about a developmental variance, and it's what I think Steve was getting at.
Yeah.
When you talk about, and I had a conversation with Councilman Gardner about this earlier today, you know, when you're talking about subdivisions, right, and whether they're residential, commercial, let's just take a residential subdivision, that cost is going to get passed on to the future resident, right? Because that's, the developer's not going to eat that cost. But when you're talking about a developmental variance, you're talking about things like, this is too high, my garage is too high, my fence is too high, or as Tom said, my fence is in an area it's not supposed to be. So when you're talking about existing residents, when I look at this schedule, the use variance is something different. A use variance is, I bought this property and I'm, and I'm allowed to use it as, as, you know, a residence, and now I want to use it as a store, right? I want to change the use.
I see.
I'm not worried, I wouldn't be worried if I were you from a policy standpoint about the use variances of the conditional use. I think Steve was kind of on to something when he pointed out keeping it.
let's just take a residential subdivision, that cost is going to get passed on to the future resident, right? Because that's, the developer's not going to eat that cost. But when you're talking about a developmental variance, you're talking about things like, this is too high, my garage is too high, my, my fence is too high, or as Tom said, my fence is in an area it's not supposed to be. So when you're talking about existing residents, when I look at this schedule, the use variance is something different. A use variance is I bought this property and I'm, and I'm allowed to use it as an, as, you know, a residence, and now I want to use it as a store, right? I want to change the use. I'm not wor, I wouldn't be worried if I were you from a policy standpoint about the use variances of their conditional use. I think Steve was kind of on to something when he pointed out keeping an eye on the developmental variance. Because even if you look at the comparison of like Carvel and Fishers and stuff, that number is, is high. And when you look at probably the average cost of a project that comes in for a developmental variance, that's your existing residents that have a piece of property, want to do an improvement. And now you're really adding to that, along with coming to three meetings, or two meetings, as Tom said.
Right.
So of all the numbers, that's the one that kind of sticks out at me. As if you're talking about affecting a resident, that's the one.
Okay, so it's the development standards, not the use variance?
The development variance.
Development standards variance, okay. So given that, um, that just, it seems, I, I think all the others, um, seem to make sense when we look at our neighbors where, where we were so much lower than pretty much everybody, except for, I believe it's one town, I don't want to misspeak, it was Hobart, you said passed through their cost, so it's, it's more than one, it looks. But, so the others all seem fine. You know, I, I'm just a little bit concerned about that, because if somebody wants to put up a fence. But I mean, we, we, like, Steve said we can keep our eye on it, but I don't...
Why don't, why don't we just drop it down to 450?
What would you think of that, um, Councilor?
I mean, well, as I said, the, the basis for this fees is our, our actual costs to pay an attorney to do the legal work for these projects. Um, so it would be the board's, you know, the council's decision if that's something that they want to effectively subsidize for the residents, or if they want the residents to pay the, uh, fee, you know, all the town residents subsidized by the, you know, by the general taxpayer.
That's valid.
I think, you know, when we're talking about, uh, developmental standards variance, I think you do have a point. Yeah, I mean, the scale of the two is probably the, you know, there's probably the greatest amount of space between the cost of a project and the fee. So I would say that we don't want to necessarily encourage people to apply for and get variances. They're really supposed to be in cases where there is an unusual circumstance. Um, but that being said, you know, zoning ordinances and towns are required by law to provide relief, uh, in the event that the zoning ordinance doesn't fit with a particular situation. So to the extent that it's in the best interest of the public to not restrict their ability to appeal, then I think a lower B would be appropriate as well.
I would agree. I, I think lower than the fee would be the way to keep an eye on this as, to what is suggested, just monitor it, but I'd rather start with it higher than what it is right now, however not as high as the 805. And then, you know, we can actually track that and then actually evaluate it in the year from now and see how many people came in with it or not. But keeping it at 300 doesn't make any sense to me. And 800 seems to be high, in my, you know, for me, if, um, I'm picking 450 or under $500 would make sense to me. If that means we're subsidized to our residents, then we've been doing it for the last 20 years, so.
You want to alter your motion?
I would like to alter my motion and actually change the development standards variance from 805 to $450.
Second amendment.
We have a motion and a second, and I'll call them one more time for, are there any other questions based since we, we have an amended motion? Seeing none, I'll put Treasury Miss, can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulawitsky?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
President Mellon?
Yes.
Five zero, approve the new piece.
So is that for the amendments? And do we need to vote for the...
It's just the amendment.
So now we need to vote for the original motion, too, is that right?
Yes.
That is how you said it.
Yeah, that is how I said it.
So now, now it's amended.
So now it's amended.
So now you need to vote on it as amended.
All right, ready for roll?
Go.
All right, Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulawitsky?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
The amended, the amended motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gardner Wood. That will take us to new business ordinance 1810, additional appropriations. This is a first reading.
I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance 1810 on first reading, an ordinance for the additional appropriation of funds for the year 2020.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have, I'll ask for several things, either comments from, I'll put Treasury...
Fire alarm? Fire alarm? No, I'm just, I'm just describing how much, or what that is. Okay, Trish is coming up, but this is, this is considered pretty much housekeeping.
Yes.
And, um, we're, um, looking for additional appropriations in both the sewer depreciation funds for $100,000 and the water depreciation fund for $250,000. Um, this requires a public hearing, which is scheduled for November 16th, and then there'll be an adoption of an ordinance by town council. Uh, these are reporting only funds, and, um, that's what I, I just wanted to clarify something. I'm not sure if I heard the motion correctly.
Okay.
You're hearing it on first reading, but not adopting it tonight because you haven't had the public hearing.
Correct. Is that how the motion was made?
I will change my motion if I made the mistake of saying the wrong motion. The motion was due, okay. Uh, yeah, here proposed ordinance 1810 for additional appropriations on first reading and scheduled second reading in a public hearing for November 16th, 2020.
Okay, we still have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or further discussion, anything for...
My only question was, what's the source of the 350,000?
Existing...
Yes.
Or, yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Seeing no other comments, uh, Treasury Miss, will you please call for the vote?
Calling for a vote, we had an amended motion. And we're voting, do we vote twice or once?
No, I don't think...
It wasn't an amended motion.
It wasn't, okay. Very clarification, very good, thank you. Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulawitsky?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
And President Mellon?
Yes. Five zero. Thank you. Moves us to item B, Resolution 2076, supporting the funding by NERC of Indiana University's Regional Greenhouse Gas Inventory Cohort.
I would move to adopt Resolution 2076 to, for the town to voice its support of NERC's efforts to develop the regional greenhouse gas inventory. I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion, questions?
I have a question. Wendy, did you replace, um, they shaped for on this committee for the 20...
I'm on NERC. Yes, I'm on NERC.
The plan for this?
I don't know that it was discussed as part of the 2050 plan, but I...
The other question that I had, it's, all we're doing right now is just allowing them to gather data, correct?
Yes, that's, that's what the...
All we're doing is gathering data, right?
Right.
Right, okay.
I think we're gathering data and we're, we're making some town staff available to assist the interns in, in gathering and providing that data.
At a cost not to exceed $3,000.
Just would like to add that I have not, there has not been an issue that has come before this council since my term began, that I have received more letters of support of, of this project. They've, they've been 100% in favor of our stuff and being part of the cohort.
I, too, have received several emails, and I tried, I believe I replied to everyone. If I missed someone, please, I did, I, I think that I replied to everybody, but I did see several that were in favor of us collecting data and naming a baseline.
All right, keep track of who I get, who I do, who I ask.
Yes, exactly.
The only question I would have is, is that, I do know that Wendy's are, um, representative to NERC, but I, I believe this program, um, who will be coordinating the efforts from, from the town? Is, is that really the town manager and the public works, or it, it's really going to come from the town manager's office, or is it?
I'm comfortable doing it, yes.
Yeah, I, I think that that's the natural place for it.
Right.
I'd be happy to do it, but I think that it belongs to the town manager.
I just want to make sure we, you know, clarify with the, with the go-to person or contact person, so.
Yeah, there's, there's obligations that they'll have to do.
Okay.
I, I did want to work with Mr. Anderson on the funding. The funding is laid out in the memo. I, um, I think that we, we need to have a conversation, fiscal funds and the line items that it comes from, so.
I thank you for doing that, and so that we can come today with that all done.
Yeah, I would echo what Ken said, you know, Councilor Gardner and I met in July with a group of citizens. It's been, kind of been a model of civic engagement. A group of people came together, they presented us lots of information, made it clear for us, they coordinated with other communities, they said it would go to NERC, it went to NERC, it was approved, they helped us with the language, um, to make it really easy for us. The town of Highland has adopted this a, a week ago, um, so I feel like this is, um, it's been well coordinated, and I want to thank the people who are involved. Happy to vote.
Okay, all right. I believe seeing everyone has had an opportunity, so, uh, Treasury Miss, will you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulawitsky?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
And President Mellon?
Yes.
Five zero to move forward with the IU homework, very exciting.
Thank you. Uh, that takes us to the Neptune software water meter reading, uh, software agreement.
I will make a motion to approve the software upgrade and the annual licensing with utility supply company covering the Neptune meter reading software in the total amount of $16,884.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or discussion?
Only though I love the fact that they use the word Neptune.
Can you please note that in a minute? That Counselor Schoen loves the word Neptune.
It's the name of Neptune.
Very good. You have to have a little bit of...
It was a favorite subject when I was in high school.
Oh, I see, okay, so...
I had a point of curiosity. It says the software has capabilities the town can grow into when current meters are eventually replaced. Do we know what those capabilities are?
Well, I think it's partly the cloud uploads. Um, we're going to have to upgrade our meters. I think the timetable is within the next five years. So whatever those meters are capable, this, the upgrades are going to be... Trish is working with Neptune. And, and some of the things that would be more down the line would be things like, you think you're, you, you call if you have high usage. We could sit and watch your usage and see in real time.
Oh, cool.
That kind of thing, um, and a, a different way of reading where we wouldn't even have to send somebody out, where we could have like towers that could just automatically capture. So we could be getting readings like every hour or something like that if we wanted.
So I imagine this $16,000 investment will be, should have a payback period.
I, I would imagine.
Yeah, lower, lower staff costs.
Yes, over time. Now, we're not, we're not near that yet, um, but the, the software has the capability for that. Our meters do not yet.
Yeah, were you upgrading everyone's water meters in town? Is that...
Not, not at this time. No, this is just the software, but the meters, I think, is it five years from now? The meters have about another five years in their standard useful life, and that's when the conversation will have to happen about how does council want to approach potentially replacing meters. But it, we've got at least five years before we need to be worried about that.
And is meter reading, is that currently town staff to do that?
Yes.
This is one of those instances where our capital improvement actually reduces operating expenses, which is a nice thing to see.
Yes. We're pleased with the potential for it growing into our new software. It should be a good marriage. We're, we're pleased.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Treasury Miss, can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulawitsky?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
President Mellon?
Yes.
Five zero to get the new Neptune, the new Neptune software.
Thank you. That takes us to item D, the 2020 Street Improvements Project Final Application for Payment for Southwood and Camelia.
I move we approve the final payment to Washington County in the amount of $21,157.90.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any, are there any questions or discussion regarding, regarding the item?
Apologies if this is a basic question. Does the 10% retainage, what does that mean? What, what is the retainage, how does that work?
Well, it's an accounting practice, and typically we have not used it. But for the two projects before you, we have, uh, and perhaps Wendy could discuss like the finer points of compliance, but, you know, apparently it's a best practice to withhold the last 10 until you're complete, uh, and then you go through the punch list, it's done. And then we can't say, well, it's done, you have to, as the policymaking body in the fiscal board say, it is done. So we're asking...
So this is just the final payment.
It's just the final payment, it's not a change order or anything like that, it's just closing the book.
Okay, thank you.
It's helmince bro, and the way that it's worded is it should get approval to be let. So that's what we're doing today. It's pretty common in parks departments when they do bigger projects. It's unusual to do it, or it has been up until now, doing it in council meetings. But at last Dustin said it is a best practice.
Any other questions? Seeing none, uh, Treasury Miss, can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulawitsky?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis? Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Five zero?
Thank you. Moves us to item E, Community Development Block Grant Alley Repaving Project. It is the final application for payment and release for tenage.
Yes.
I would move to authorize the preferred selection of striping, which appears to be... Sorry.
Now, this, this is, uh, this, the block grant.
Letter E.
Letter E.
My loan.
I love we approve the final payment to Washington County in the amount of $25,941.64.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? I'm actually, am I looking at this the wrong way? Because I was, I had a different number for E. Pardon me? E, yeah, no, I looked at E, so it's, where is this, um, the total amount, do this invoice?
It's the second page, I think.
Okay.
There's two pages to it.
Oh, the 25,000, sorry.
Yeah, that's the...
Okay. I didn't want us to be off by 104,000, that would be good.
No, no, but it's usually 10% retainages.
Right, and that's, I just, I just didn't go far enough. Okay, um, so I, am I the only one that had a question there? All right, Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Can I clarify whose seconded that motion, was that you, Counselor Schoen? Oh, there we go, thank you. I had it too close. All right, Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulawitsky?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
President Mellon?
Yes.
Five zero.
Thank you. That moves us to item F, and this motion is all speed.
Sure, I made a note of it. I would move to authorize the preferred selection of striping, which appears to be a Calumet avenue from the tracks to Fisher Street and White Oak from Fisher Street to Ridge for a total cost not to exceed $33,728.95.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion questions?
The concept of that doing the other two is just mainly because the, the work would not be able to be completed this fall?
I don't think it could be. Uh, you're more than welcome to, uh... You're more than welcome to say, go ahead and do it, and they would probably hold their prices into the next construction season, just pick it up. Or the prices could be lower next year, or they could be higher next year. I don't know. So there's something to be said for the sure thing. If you say authorize the whole 68,000, we do have a commitment that what they don't get done this year, they'll keep that price. But I don't think they could get more than the 33,728 proposed, the ceiling done this year. So it's really a question of, do you think the, it'll be the same cheaper or more expensive next year? This was the only company that bid this year, perhaps another competitor would bid next year and the competition would drive the price down. I don't know. So that's why I kind of left it as a, it's kind of a push.
And there are other companies that do this.
There are.
There's a common feeling that if you would bid this out again next year, you possibly.
Possibly.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. For Treasure Miss, can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Coulthardis?
Yes.
President Mellon?
Yes.
Five zero, we're getting some streets driven.
All right. Moves us to G, the pedestrian bridge over Hart Ditch and Katie Marsh Ditch.
I will move to award, oh, okay. I will move to award this work to SEH of Indiana and authorize town manager to negotiate and execute a final contract not to exceed $140,500. I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions regarding this project?
I have a question. Dustin, are we going to get any residential input or reverse award this path itself? Our side of the property?
So if you're looking at the glorified crayon drawing that I included in my memo, that concrete pad on the left-hand side, the western side of the picture is the end of Munster, it's where the sidewalk ends. That exists right there, and we're going to propose at some angle going east by southeast, place a, probably a cast-in-place structure over the Hart Ditch. That's the red.
Red crayon?
Yeah, that's the red crayon. And then we're going to go easterly above the ordinary high water mark ideally to the yellow block, which will go over the Katie Marsh Ditch into Highland. So there's not a, an activity for public input. Certainly we can add it, but this is the NIPSCO easement, and the project proposes to exist entirely within the NIPSCO easement. So there won't be any kind of. Okay.
Any other questions?
You know, just comparing the two proposals, the DLZ had a different layout, more like your crayon drawing, which traversed the ditches at more like 90 degrees. In their proposal, they said that would result in a shorter bridge than what I saw in the SEH proposal, which sort of crossed them directly east-west, which will make for longer bridges. So I know there was a difference in the price of the two designs. I was wondering though if the design presented by DLZ might end up in a lower construction cost because of.
It's possible, but I would say that the preliminary design that you saw in the SEH proposal is a result of some preliminary utility locating work that they have done under their general services contract. So it's more informed by the conditions underground. This swath of NIPSCO land is chock full of both transmission and distribution wires for electricity, as well as at least five known pipelines that are active, and some that are inactive and abandoned in place. But you got to treat them as they're active because of a whole thing that NIPSCO does. So it's a real tight area. It's constructible, it's doable. And I would say that the kind of concept that DLZ provided probably makes the most sense in a vacuum. It's like, let's cross it here. Perhaps they don't have the benefit of knowing where some of those utilities are. That would preclude that tidy 90-degree crossing.
So if we're approving this, are we also approving this design? Or is this just to get started?
So the design is what you're saying, go do. You're saying, get the environmental work done and design us a bridge. And under your motion, they're going to get the environmental work done and design us a bridge for $140,000.
There's no risk of, you know, the DLZ had some optional or potential cost they didn't think would come into play.
Sure. Again, I think that is a cautious, an appropriately cautious estimate for a project that they don't have a background in. DLZ, SEH worked with us extensively on a very rigorous application for the Next Level Trails program through INDAT. That program required a lot of due diligence and a lot of coordination with utilities and potential stakeholders in right of way. So SEH did that under our general services agreement, just as our regular study. So they do have an advantage of being a couple steps down the track out of starting blocks compared to DLZ. And DLZ, if SEH had the same kind of tabula rasa, like this is the problem, what do you think? They would probably have the same level of concern. But because they've walked down this path with us a little bit.
Unintended.
Unintended. You don't see that level of uncertainty in their proposal. And you can make a case, well, if they've done so much work, why didn't you just give it to them? Still, $140,000 is $140,000. I think it asks, it bears the question to the market, does anybody think they can do this at a more competitive price? So that's why we went out. I'm not surprised that SEH got it, but I think it was the appropriate thing to do.
Yeah, I'm very favorable of this neighborhood. It's in word for, of this project, I mean, it can really open up like traffic onto Wicker Park, there's a number of benefits, but also I think it could bring a lot of traffic to the Little Store and that whole area in the future where this could make a difference for commerce and that neighborhood. So I'm highly supportive of this, or excited about this project.
Any other comments or questions?
Have we had recent conversations with the Town of Highland and with regards to access points and things like that?
I haven't spoken with Alex over in their Parks Department recently about this, but they're aware of the letting date and that we're working together on this.
Okay. Very good.
For Treasure Miss, can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Very good. Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Coulthardis?
Yes.
And President Mellon?
Yes.
Five zero.
Thank you. Brings us to IH Resolution 2075. This is accepting the North Central Centennial Drive Infrastructure Improvements.
I would move that we adopt Resolution 2075, a resolution accepting North Central Centennial Drive Infrastructure Improvements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussion? Okay. All right. Quick Treasure Miss, will you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Coulthardis?
Yes.
And Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Item I, the HVAC Contract Award Recommendation.
I would move that we accept the recommendation to award the base bid in alternate number two to the lowest bidder, Mechanical Concepts, for a total of $533,500. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions regarding this?
I guess I just want to, has the attorney reviewed this information? When we did reports from SEH, it always says based upon attorney review. I just, has the attorney had a chance to review this?
I have not given this today to review yet, no.
Mr. Weston, is this something?
I didn't mean to put Mr. Weston on the spot here. This is a pretty basic bid, all right?
And we worked with Mechanical Concepts in the past?
For a very long time and very successfully.
And you wrote the memo, you agree we don't need the boilers at this point?
I agree with.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Coulthardis?
Yes.
President Mellon?
Yes.
Five zero.
All right, that brings us to our last item under new business, which is J, authorize open bid process for the new police squad cars.
I would move to authorize the Police Department to open the bidding process for new police vehicles.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion or questions for Chief Shekow? Who is very eager to.
I'm just going with the flow here.
No, I know, no.
Come on, Chuck, let's put him on the spot too.
I looked at the vehicles, they look nice. There's a hybrid option that seemed intriguing because of the idling, the amount of idling these vehicles do. But I couldn't tell, are we looking at the hybrids or which?
No, these are the turbocharged six.
And these the same?
Not the E.
Same sort of vehicles we have currently?
These are the same vehicles we've had for a number of years now. It's nice with the all-wheel drive for traction, especially in the winter and wet weather. And they're pursuit rated, so they better check all our files.
I do want to say that I did talk to Chief a little bit through some emails and also talked to Court Treasurer Wendy Miss. And there is a program that they're following and really out of the 22, 24 different vehicles that they have, they want to keep that on a consistent rotating balance. And was pleased to hear that the program that they have.
So every three years, we, a chunk of our fleet is rotated around. So it's rather commonplace to see these every other year.
Any other questions? Seeing none, can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Coulthardis?
Yes.
And President Mellon?
Yes. Thank you, Chief. All right, that brings us to reports. There are none. How about portfolio reports? Anyone have something they'd like to share? Wendy?
I always have things to share. I have two things. About a week or two ago was the AIM Idea Summit. It was held virtually, and Trisha and I attended it. I'd like to encourage the counselors, the town manager to attend in future. It was a lot of very good information. The topics range from TIF, the resilience cohort, had a presentation, public engagement. They also presented awards for placemaking and green, turning your community green. So it was very interesting, it was an interesting couple of days, so we did that. And then one other thing, on November 16th, there'll be, I worked with President Mellon to put together. Every year, in 2018, a law was passed that we, the redevelopment commission, I probably should say this under the redevelopment commission, but the redevelopment commission must hold a group meeting of all the taxing units. And so we will be hosting that again on November 16th. I will pass out, invite the other units, as Mr. Schaefer did in the past, and we'll go over, and I don't know where my little sheet is, I had a sheet that talked about what we discuss. My papers are out, are very old. There's a present, a short presentation, they go over the commission's budget, review the long-term plans, and discuss the impact on each taxing unit. So that's just a heads up that that's coming on November 16th.
Thank you. Any other reports?
I can give an update from the school board. In the October meeting, yeah, there was a diversity parent committee set up, I think it's called Supporting Minority Students. So that was launched this week. I think from each school, there were about three parents identified. Students also came to attend and tell their stories along with staff. I heard that was very positively received and a nice step forward. Also, at the board meeting, they announced that a number of students are coming back to school for the first semester is done. So I missed E, but there's 32 at Frank Hammond, 42 at Elliott, 60 at the middle school, and about 70 at Munster High School. So seems to be, everything seems to be going well, and more parents are comfortable coming back.
Thank you.
We didn't have a planned commission this past month to the like business.
Okay, thank you.
No report. No report for me.
All right. No, all right. Thank you. That leaves us with announcements that our town council meetings will begin at 7:00 PM unless otherwise noted. Our next meeting at this point is November 16th. And the reason I say at this point is because November 2 has been canceled because of the because of the election and the setup, and it puts the judges and everything here way too late, seeing that they have to get up so early the next morning. But we will need to do some sort of meeting. It can be during the day. It'll be just to pay bills. So we will be coordinating, that will be publicly announced, it will be sunshine, everything can be in order. But the Court Treasurer's Office has just asked that we not leave those sitting for a full month, so.
We can do that via Zoom, I assume.
We can do it via Zoom, correct Dave? And we can, and it only will, it requires if we can't get everyone, since it's not a Monday, and that's what everybody kind of has on their calendar, we can go with a short, so we'll be.
Could we not meet the day we're supposed to? I mean, on November 2nd? But meet by Zoom so that we wouldn't be using this property? Okay, that's the day we've all set aside for meetings.
So the problem is is the public wants to attend. Where do they go? You only got to have it via Zoom. I mean, it'd be a different notice than what you're using now. You could do it and have them attend virtually also, but what you've been doing now is kind of offering this hybrid model, and that would be different. You could do it, but just understand you're.
We would still be using this room, so if we wanted it in-person option two, then it beats our. I believe we had, we had talked about it, if everyone, Wednesday, was that it? I don't have my calendar.
Yes, I think it was 11:04.
11:04 at 12:30.
Oh, noon, yeah.
Noon or 12:30. It'll be a five-minute meeting, most likely. Do we have, I can make that, if we have two more, if a minimum that can. I know that you probably can not do.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
So 12 or 12:30, because I'll get that sunshine, right? And we'll get those.
I'll Zoom is better.
12:00 PM.
I'm also available.
You're available. So that has, that's three. And if you, if you can.
Okay.
Okay. All right, there it is then. That is an announcement of the next meeting would be November 4th at noon. All right, that brings us to adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, we are adjourned, and we will move into our redevelopment commission meeting.
Castro is making a guest appearance.
Yes.
I am, I thought I'd regale you.
For my goodness gracious.
Nice to see you.
It is nice to see you, haven't seen you for a while.
See you guys too.
I've just lost all my agendas. I'll call to order 8:13, the redevelopment commission meeting for October 19th, 2020. Is there anyone, or Wendy, can you please call?
Commissioner Schoen?
Present.
You're here? Okay. Commissioner Gardner?
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Present.
Commissioner Coulthardis?
Present.
Commissioner Mellon? Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
Lay an eyes on you, Ken. So when you're humble in there.
All right.
And we acknowledge our liaison, Mr. Castro is in the house. Nice to see you.
Thank you. And that brings us to the public comments portion of our meeting. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the redevelopment commission? Seeing none? Oh, yes. No, wait. Were you kidding? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm not sure if it's inappropriate. This is just, is this plan and redevelopment or just redevelopment?
This is the redevelopment, as you say. Are you?
Redevelopment commission.
Commission is not plan commission. So no, okay. All right. Mr. Anderson, did we have any emails from the public? No. All right, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and that takes us to the consent agenda.
Make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, can you please call for the vote?
Sure. Commissioner Schoen.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Commissioner Mellon.
Yes. And that, there is no old business or new business.
The only new business would be same thing, but the meeting times change.
I was gonna say. Yeah, that's okay. No, I was.
But then the sixteenth is the big group. It may take more than five, ten minutes for that meeting.
Right, the November, yes, that'll be a longer meeting than normal. So the November sixteenth, which you discussed, and then I would say our meeting. We can have that right out. We had said that it wasn't absolutely necessary to do November fourth for these, but if we're gathered to pay the bills, as you said, that we'll go ahead and do it. So our next redevelopment commission meeting will be November fourth, following the twelve o'clock town council, special town council meeting. All right, that brings us to adjournment.
So I'll second that, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? We are adjourned at fifteen.